Good evening and welcome to the Village Hall of Fame State for the Plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to our second meeting of the month of June. Tonight we'll use the tournament sort of last month where let if anyone has any questions for the agenda, then we'll go through the agenda, then we'll have board reports, and then we'll open it up for any questions or comments from the residents. With that, is there anyone in this hall who has any questions or comments on the agenda? I'll leave anyone on Zoom who has any questions about the agenda.
If anyone raised their hand.
Opinions, thoughts, comments in the chat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that we approve the minutes of the regular award proceeds coming in on June 7th, 2022.
Any discussion, or in favor, against, motion to carry?
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts paid as follows. General fund: $3,731,501.84. Full fund: $47,572.14. Capital fund: $8,389.50. Pre-credit total of $3,708,463.48.
I'll look for resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please.
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to either approve or ratify your request to use public facilities subject to receipt of certificate of insurance at ZPC and to accomplish all requirements as presented.
How long that will?
I'll say any discussion, or in favor, against, motion to carry?
I would ask the board to approve the rising time pay for retired officer Robert Hedley, effective May 28, 2022, in accordance to the PDA, the relevant authority.
I will affirm the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that the application of DJD Corp., also known as John Lorna, request to modify so that it is permitted to allow a full restaurant use at 6-8 Marina and in 4 o'clock New York. It is a type-two action that turns the fine to the secret and will not have significant effect on the volume.
I'll look for resolution.
Second. Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the 2022 one-journey payment to the following non union personnel as per the CSA one-journey schedule presented.
I'll look for resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the proposal from D and E engineers for reconstruction, inspection services for reconstruction of Spooner Street, Lakeview Avenue to South Tyson Avenue, School of Municipal Park Line, Hinsdale Avenue from Jericho to Love Avenue, and Clayton Avenue in the amount not to exceed $60,000 to afford the rights to mayor or village administrator to sign said purpose.
How long that will?
I'll say any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $525,000 for the construction of improvements to the Happy Ring Multi-Purpose Court is a type-two action that turns the fine to secret and will not have significant effect on the volume.
I'll look for the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the construction of improvements to the Happy Ring Multi-Purpose Court and the estimated maximum cost thereof is $525,000 appropriate in said amount for such purpose and authorize the issuance of bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $525,000 to finance said appropriation.
I'll look for resolution.
Second. Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $120,000 to finance the purchase of two police patrol vehicles is a type-two action that turns the fine to secret and will not have significant effect on the volume.
I'll look for resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the acquisition of two police patrol vehicles in the estimated maximum cost thereof is $120,000 appropriate in said amount for such purpose and authorize the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $120,000 to finance said appropriation.
I'll look for that resolution.
I'll say any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl. I would ask the board to authorize our Cynthia Flea that as the quantum type of disparity contract will rate of $17.61 per hour, subject to medical, drug, alcohol screen and S and K service measures approved.
I'll look for resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize salary increases to quantum employees before year-round pocket attendance at the recreation center hours concerned on the attached list, which also includes the promotion of doing the note to the position of the wife guard with an increase to $15.50 and now effective immediately.
I'll look for that resolution.
I'll say any discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Six voting member. Ms. Walsh, does it?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $850,000 to finance the purchase of a fire truck is a type-two action that turns the fine to secret and will not have significant effect on the volume.
I'll look for resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the acquisition of a fire truck in the estimated maximum cost thereof is $100,000 appropriate in said amount for such purpose and authorize the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $850,000 to finance said appropriation.
How long that will?
I'll say any discussion, just to note this is for the Alliance truck on North End that's over 25 years old.
I would like to thank the committee together by the Fire Department for their diligence in researching a safe vehicle for our volunteers.
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the village to enter into a contract with road work headquarters for the reconstruction of Marshall Avenue between Copa Avenue and the street, the village of Farmingdale's contract, and in the amounts of $230,622 and authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign said contract.
I'll look for that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Justice Cumbaya, Justice Chair, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbody, and Mayor Cheryl.
Aye. Thank you very much. And now we will turn to board reports, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor Dr. Moon.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I will start off with the Fire Department. As you've just heard and know, this evening, we approve the acquisition of a new fire engine through issuance of bonds. The fire engine, as we said, to be utilized by Alliance Company on the north side. Current truck and its equipment and technology are about 25 years old. Many of the newer trucks' features will focus on safety and more efficient firefighting. The bidding process will begin shortly, to be followed by placing the order for the new engine in July. Training is an ongoing priority for our firefighters, and by ongoing, we mean every week. The department now has the unique opportunity to practice important skills that accompany effective firefighting. Without using any fire, that's no fire at all and no water, our department will use some theaters spoken in empty, soon to be demolished, house on Colorado Avenue to practice techniques such as lateral positioning, finding walls in order to escape, search for rescues for victims as well as fellow firefighters. This unique opportunity will take place tomorrow Wednesday, June 22nd, from about 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Fire trucks will be at the scene thanks to all the Fire Department, Village World, and the homeowners for making this valuable training experience possible for our firefighters. Our Fire Department says, let's save lives, and they do that many ways. One way is the department's well-known blood drives. The next one is this Friday, June 24th, 10 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Fire Department Headquarters and City Hall. Orders are preferred, but not necessary. Information from the master, you may email the co@fpfd dot com. Let's all save lives by donating blood. For our Department of Public Works, road projects are underway with the reconstructions beginning on Spooner, the latest in June, and on Marshall in early July. Another fourth company project will be National Grids, Gas Main, and Home Service Replacements. Starting around July 1st, this replacement work will be done on Carnation Avenue from Raft to Birch, Birch Street to Willow and Old Willow, Cypress Street from Raft to Flore Parkway, East Poplar, and Flore Parkway from Cypress to Old Street. Notices will be filled out to all affected residents. Questions may be referred to DPW at 516-326-6320. At Modern Southern Flore Park with the beautiful penny baskets of flowers that DPW has placed at the poles on Tork and Copa Avenue, the Jericho Turnpike, and when traveling on Jericho, you'll also see new bright by flower boxes and medians. On Plainfield, you can admire the large number of brand-new trees that line the street as they continue to grow and blossom, building beauty to this very busy street. For the Conservation Society, FPCS, thanks to many, including FPCS volunteers for an area in Moina, President Madison Henry, many FPCS neighborhood volunteers, Superintendent Kirk Mayford, and the Parks Department, and the Department of Public Works for amazing evening outdoors in the sunshine and flowering special area of Special Hub Centennial Garden. It was a great gathering of friends and a successful fundraiser for FPCS who use these funds to maintain and enhance our gardens, especially all the unique flower beds that are there. Guests to our gardens are reminded that you may not pick the flowers or remove any flowers, plants, or bushes from the gardens, nor should you plant anything new in the gardens without the formal approval of the whole of our Conservation Society of Leadership. We all share that these centennial gardens are alive, vibrant, and beautiful. For the Chamber of Commerce and our businesses, summertime means sunshine and daylight hours into the evening. Enjoy strolling through our Flore Parks within our shopping district, see all that our businesses have to offer, and it is the perfect time to grab a cake to one of our wonderful restaurants and invite you to eat. Shop and dine local inside and out here in the summer Flore Parks here in Atlanta. And finally, to our very special graduates, the graduation season will come to an end this month. As our public elementary and high school graduate, as our public and elementary high school students graduate this week, please honor them and all our private school and university graduates who have created their own futures and unique success stories. They have made us proud, and we congratulate them all.
Thank you, everybody. Justice Chair.
Mr. Mayor, Ralph Christopher Longbody. On Saturday, June 11th, the Belmont Stakes ran at Belmont Race Track. This event is always a shared and enjoyed throughout community, especially for West End. This year, as the years pass, the May 38th in the West End was open for patrons sitting in the picture for race track. Our police around the course to ensure that our community while enjoying the event is safe. The police did a great job moving the initial traffic from the event quickly and without incidents through our streets. Thanks also to DPW for putting out all the barricades and assistings around today. The police reported that they issued a small amount of summonses without any major issues, and there were no arrests. It was a great day, and the entire police department and DPW did a fantastic job. Our police department has also initiated a safety measure program for our schools by conducting random school visits. This initiative, as our officers are many towards making random stops at our schools, the officers enter the schools, walk the halls to show their presence, and make observation on any safety concerns. It has been well received by both the students and the faculty, and our office enjoyed doing it. This initiative is in addition to our officers' presence at children drop-off in the morning and pickup at dismissal in the afternoon. They are out of schools during these times. I'd like to thank our police department for showing their special interest and attention to our most valuable treasures, our children. Thank you. For the building department, just a reminder, with the summer upon us, all Douglas split air conditioning units require a permit. If you have any question regarding this or any other building project questions, please contact the building department. It is always advisable to ask questions and to get them answered before you start your project. Also, the AR meeting, DCA agendas, and supporting documents are posted on the Village website by Friday before 8 p.m. Email lists are also being sent out, all being intended by default. As of this afternoon, there is no decision yet from the ZPA on Centennial Hall.
Thank you, Justice Chair. Justice Stewart?
Hi, good evening. Along on the railroad and the 3TC project, the Village Board along with Village Administrator Jerry Bamber continue to work to mitigate residents' concerns regarding tractor. We want the MTA and the FCO on the railroad to give the best neighborhood handy for our recreation center. It feels like in every board meeting, I say that this is the best time of year at our recreation center, and that is certainly true at this time, at the start of summer. Tennis tournaments are happening, in fact, general play happens nearly around the clock with players lining up outside the recreation center before 8 a.m. daily. I see that as a reward. Adult basketball and volleyball league play has begun. We have some competitive teams, and sometimes some competitive teams, but fun is being had by all. The fields are busy with Little League, and in fact, a resident reached out to me on Friday and said, "The park was alive last night. Three Little League tournament games, five of the three courts, two basketball games. Flore Park at its absolute best." Thursday night, the annual Michael Davidson Little League Tournament kicked off, and we were all happy, well, the board, we were all happy to be present at the opening ceremonies on this past Saturday morning. It was an honor to listen to the inspiring words of Mrs. Davidson and Michael's brother, Eric, as they spoke about the value of work they do for FDNY families facing adversity. Big thanks to our work, to Kirk Mayford on our recreation staff for working to make sure the fields are ready, and another thanks for Karen and Gerard, Karen, the jointman directors, for weekend well-being. As for the pool, the pool has been incredibly busy, thanks in part to the wonderful weather we've had to begin the season. Friday nights, more than 400 routine residents turn out for the annual Blue Hour event. Big thanks to Paul Burakatam, and to Lieutenant Kirk Mayford, as well as Gina Kane for all they did to bring this great event back for our 11 and 15-year-olds. We're looking forward to other specialty days such as the senior citizens morning in the middle of July, the day at the pool for our fearless local heroes, the Flore Park Fire Department, as well as family nights and other kid-friendly events. On Monday, 6:27, the pool opens with its full summer hours with all programs kicking off, including this one team. You have a chance to have a pool and cheer on our pirates during their, one of their maxime meets this summer.
Thank you.
So not only do you report on, but you actually play on?
Not anymore.
I was going to say, the first time I went to the pool, so I actively played.
No, my, you gotta go to that, because I was taking notice.
Justice Longbody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. For the Flore Park Library, the bidding process will begin shortly for the new EDA-compliant entrance at the front of the library building. This will include a new ramp and entry doors, meaning the library entrance fully EDA-compliant and accessible. Construction is commencing to start at the beginning of October. The summer loan concerts are back with concerts planned for July 7th, July 21st, and August 11th so far, along with all dinner reading dates listed. All concerts start at 7:00 p.m. Reminder, this Sunday from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., the library will host a summer reading lunch with a delicious barbecue on the lawn. Adults, teens, and children should bring 50 blankets and chairs, sign up for summer reading, and enjoy the barbecue. If you're looking to go out on a date with your kids this summer, great education opportunities available in the museum jasses. A library cardholder 18 or older can reserve one desk from listed museums, of course, all now with the day you pick, subject to availability. It's a great opportunity to get out and see some interesting educational places. These and many other events, as always, listed on the library website, floreparklibrary.org. For Four Village Studio, Four Village Studio is a fully operational TV studio and production center. There's great opportunities for teenagers and those who are thinking about a career in TV and media production to learn about the industry by volunteering in the studio. Jim Green is the operations manager of the studio for 24 years and has a vast knowledge of the industry and how things work, having worked in the industry for years prior to coming to the studio. He has taught many volunteers over the years, as well as pointed them in the right direction for their college education, then moving on to successful careers in the business. New shows occurring in the works and will be announced soon. One of the two new computers to update the studio of computers that are very old and are outdated is expected to be installed in July. Once this is up and running without issues, hopefully, the second one will not be far behind. As always, please visit fourvs.org for dates and times, as well as complete list of shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice Longbody. And just to follow on with Four Village Studio, Four Village Studio, the bulletin board has some roles pretty much all day except at the times when shows are on. It's a great resource to find out what's happening in the village, not only with village meetings, but also groups and volunteer organizations that have events. So 15 minutes of your time once a week, you can see what's going on within the village, within our four, our three neighboring villages, along with others that do pretty soothing music at times. Also, I had the pleasure on Saturday of attending an Eagle Scout ceremony in North City. One of the members there, one of the five recipients was a resident of Flore Park. Most of the recipients have tamed the Eagle Scout over the last two years, but they weren't able to have a ceremony because of the pandemic. It was a great event, and we've attended many of these. It's great to see young men in not only Flore Park now, but other neighboring villages stepping up and learning a lot of different life skills and leadership skills. And one thing I think we forget to mention once in a while is the leaders of those troops who put in years and years of efforts, not only to get the Eagle Scouts to where they are, but all the other scouts that come through their programs. It's a tremendous effort by those folks and time commitment, and like everything else, I think they enjoy it, but it is a lot of work. Deputy Mayor, providing myself, also had the pleasure of attending the Knights of Columbus 100th Anniversary Picnic. They're celebrating throughout the year their 100th anniversary on Saturday, another great event. And then lastly, with Justice Chair mentioned about the Belmont Stakes, I was there with group, there was a lot of people to come to the May 38th, especially in the evening. We can handle that once a year, but we will not be able to handle that 259 city entries. So thanks to the Metta Williams Police Department and DPW, but it is a coordinated effort to get that done, so we don't worry about any major incidents and not be sustainable for more than one day. I'd like to thank Just the Fax Media, Felix's son. Thank you for being here in his absence, and Brent Duffy from the Allen Now, well-wolfed. Thank you for being here covering. With that, I'd like to make a note that that promotion closes portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Aye. Or in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, open it up for questions and comments. We'll start at the Village Hall. If anyone has a question, comment, concern, and would like to be approached with us. Mr. O'Malley?
I would. With that, here you go. Good evening, every chairman of the board of trustees. Across the Village train station on Blackening Avenue, it's a small park, certain to buffer the local area for the white train and commercial rush hour. In that park stands a sign, "Place for the model Flore Park, a great place for it. Of late, the situation hasn't altered, and the platform at the station is in that very corner. The situation is posing a grave affront to the words on that sign and the director's song on the community to be called home. As I'm sure you're aware, a number of people who were experiencing homelessness have taken down the station to their primary residence. What started as a series of isolated incidents on the platform has descended into torrent streams and behind our garages. What's next? How long until we wake up and find them in our yards, harassing our children, or setting up tents in the park? They're not looking for training or reading friends. In fact, very often, they are found with bottles of food passed out in the line across the platform. We have personally witnessed aggressively agitated, looted addicts and strings of old language that would make sailors blush. We are concerned for our families and our neighbors. Mr. Mayor, members of the board of trustees, the question that I laid at your feet here today is, when is it done in mind? Will they notify, 15? Will they set up shopings in your business, or perhaps appear in front of Village Hall? How many will need this to be harassed, intimidated, or perhaps assaulted before something is done? It's high time we use the power and resources of your offices and create solutions to the problem for a friendly road to the body of our village. In closing, I would like to thank Trunkie Store for taking time off her busy schedule yesterday, to meet with us, take pictures, and listen. Through her actions and understanding, she has shown independence of village residents. I'd also like to thank Mr. Calister for his call and follow-up in regards to the situation of the current at our home on Sunday, June 19th, when one of my neighbors, while I was walking to the dog with you on Sunday morning, witnessed one of these people at the rates of homelessness, defecating on my garage. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you had a conversation with Commissioner today.
I did.
I see a couple ideas to move forward with.
Yes.
And I know that is a portion of their control of your day, and I write for the train station.
Yeah, we had not just, we were responsible. My understanding is not just down there, it's up at this station, it's on Jericho Turnpike, it's an issue in the village. I mean, and I know, I mean, you know.
I, the other way around.
Yeah, absolutely. And I talked to Mr. O'Malley about that. We've been actually responding to the platform and what had occurred there, making awareness of what was going on. So we tried to work our MTA PD as best we can. I don't think, you said maybe last Wednesday he might have come back?
Uh, they were back last weekend, and they were being very aggressive to young children who were, I guess, maybe 14 to 15-year-old young ladies who were taking the trains to the city, so much so, the gentleman was wearing his crotch, running after them, taking pictures of the girls, that they were frightened when they drank. Then they were, he was back on Wednesday. I wasn't aware of the woman, like I said, he had to go out of town, my husband's brother passed away. I wasn't aware of the woman until my neighbor, until we got home, actually. I didn't know if she was there, like I mentioned to you on the phone, whether they watched us from the train station, packed our bags. She could have been there. I mean, there are many mornings I wake up and think our patio furniture's been moved. They could be on my property overnight. I don't have a brain, I'm not really a teenager, and I didn't feel that we have a needed one, but evidently, I may correct. You know, it's unfortunate, unfortunate, you know, set of circumstances. You know, it's unfortunate, an unfortunate, you know, set of circumstances, but I do not want to see this situation start stumbling, and now we have a larger population of issues, or, you know, people and issues and, you know, all kinds of things.
As I said to you today, I'll be back here tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, we're very proactive. I think that if something becomes too big to handle, it should be addressed and remedied.
Absolutely, that's all we're here for.
Good, thank you for putting forth that, and for the rest of the new audience, and Mary getting your comments about the, about the station. Everyone should be as powerful as they as soon as they're not comfortable with something.
And we do. Bernie and I, I'm driven up here on Saturday afternoons and file police reports, because I'm not certain that when we call up, that a report is actually being generated. Now we've come, now we're gonna start coming up to the police station every time we file a report and request a copy of it. I wanna make sure that our voices are being heard. I mean, it's, it's great if people show up, it's great if people ask people to leave, but unless, you know, I wanna know that what I'm saying is, is being written down, that people are gonna be held accountable.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here on the wall? Tony, anyone else?
Nadia.
Sure, one, she needs on you, you need on your.
Yes. She's a community.
Hi, Nadia, how are you?
Good. When, when does disabled residents be allowed to participate in our committee on commitment? For nearly twenty years now, I've been speaking out on behalf of the disabled community in Flora Park. It's our and village government to create a one-virtuous environment. From zero set entries to a front to central playground, other transportation to our village hall with others seeking their help, I have been halfway to the network that disabled residents of Flora Park encounter every single day. And yet, once again, I was reminded that disabled residents is second-class citizens in the village of Flora Park. Both group react to come into the village hall for a public year. As was the area in the state to be of two months prior, there were no being intended as a race with this particular chemical care with the public feed. This time, and many times in the past, there wasn't, and then kept that essential door to get into the building was locked. At this whole moment, I waited that fact, so the chemical that was poured wouldn't tire. There was sign on the door, there was a local plant for anyone who might be wanting to plant that seed. But, no bizarre. After I realized I wanted to attend to meeting, I was long for calling, so I had big time. I declined because I was unable to control my anger and frustration and did not want to be dealt with her. Instead, I would plead my thoughts on the public matter and ask the community to relay my message here. When, when will disabled residents of Flora Park be able to enter their residence at my door? When will disabled residents be able to carry out their statements with the manner of consent? When will disabled residents be able to present public data to persons? When will disabled residents be able to access events without the risk of being summoned by a preventable faulty machine? When will the disabled residents, half the parents of Flora Park, gain their dignity? When will the disabled residents be considered at all? I implore our village government to convene a special task force who would recommend those disabled residents. This task force should advise those who are in all manner, including, but not limited to, emergency response and repairment, village purification, website design, libraries, school of recreation, zoning, planning and development, cultural experience affairs, and everything in between. The village government must all, must become more aware, sensitive, and responsive to the disabled community. The village board should keep the recommendations for fourth side of that force in sincerity and its purpose. Now that the task force should be to support public, older, and volunteers, and better than various respective facilities in the city life. This task force has prevailed and more been heard, it must never cease to push. Following the conclusion and recognition of the task force, we implore the judge that the village board permanently install a compliant oversight treaty to ensure all changes to the ground of priority and institutions to avoid any future oversight that is intended upon the rights of disabled residents of Flora Park. The village board must ensure that the disabled community and my local residents of Flora Park are very sensitive. Thank you.
Thank you, just to respond to that. My apologies for the incident that happened the other night. The machine did great, and like I've said many times, we can always do better in certain places, and in that case, we could have done something different or better and had that maybe moved, and I apologize for that. With regards to the village in general doing stuff for disabled residents, and a couple things, as trustee Longfellow did mention, we are working on approving the access to the library to the front entrance that's in the works for the fall of the year. Design has been completed. We're using community-developed block ramps for financing on that, and hopefully it'll be done sometime in the fall. When we redo streets, we've always put handicap, car cuts in, inclusive of when we do mobile aids, we always put the handicap car cuts in, even though we believe we're not legally required when we do a mobile aid, right?
We, I believe we are, we follow rules.
Okay, but we always.
We take this call.
And I know Super Kedimaw, who's got a conference a month or so ago.
About two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, about different handicap access abilities, and there are some ideas about approving the lift here in village hall, so just to respond to that, so thank you. Anyone else? Hang on.
See, anybody else?
And so summer is officially upon us as of today. We only meet once in July and once in August. July nineteen is the next court meeting.
Yes.
July nineteen is the court meeting, and for those interested in the Z V A, you know, we'll be announcing those meetings with the agendas, and, no, there's no Z V A in the summer, but there's A R B in the summer.
There is, there is.
Why is there no Z V A in the summer?
Just talking about cases.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, hopefully everyone has a safe and enjoyable summer, and a very different summer from the last couple. Enjoy it, thank you.